We'll call this meeting of the Silver City Town Council to order. And a little different tonight is I have invited the LDS First Ward Boy Scout Troop 110 of the Geronimo District of the UCA Council. And we have Scouts Josh Shelley, Jaden Lewis, Andrew Scott, Marco Ravello, Richard Lambert, Tucker Staley, with their leaders Ken Ladner, Jeff Baldwin, and Jeremy Lewis. And I'd like to ask them to come to the front and lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. If we could all rise.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, universal, eternal.
Thank you. You have a mission. You? I could ask Counselor Thompson to read our missions statement.
Sure. Silver City is the hub of an inclusive community settled within a small town that through guided growth honors and preserves its historical, cultural, and natural heritage while facilitating jobs, health, and education resources such that the residents and visitors may enjoy and protect the recreational opportunities of the area in high quality of life.
Thank you. And the next item is under Ceremonies Proclamations. Mike, did you want me to read yours as well?
It's up to you.
It's up to you. Okay. I've got a couple of proclamations. Mr. Ely, if you can.
So proclamation, whereas fair and equal housing is a right guarantee to all Americans and whereas the principle of fair and equal housing is not only a national law and policy but a fundamental human entitlement, and whereas all citizens have the right to live where they choose within their financial means, and whereas people must not be denied housing because of race, color, religion, sex, national origin, handicap, or family status, and whereas the town of Silver City acknowledges the importance of assuring fair and equal treatment to all citizens, and whereas the town of Silver City will distribute small trash bags to customers and will display a fair housing exhibit at the city hall annex. Now therefore, I, James Marshall, Mayor of the town of Silver City, do hereby proclaim the month of April 2011 as Fair Housing Month, and are all citizens participate in appropriate activities to commemorate this event.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Mayor, and members of the council. I'd like to thank you also and the town manager for the support of fair housing, and also of all the support of the housing projects we have going, the affordable housing development and the housing rehab. And thank you for your support.
Mr. Anderson?
So proclamation, whereas we all have responsibility as individuals, neighbors, community members, and citizens of Silver City to help create healthy, safe, and nurturing experiences for childcare, for children, and whereas safe and healthy childhoods help produce confident and successful adults, and whereas child abuse and neglect often occurs when people find themselves in stressful situations without community resources and don't know how to cope, and whereas the majority of child abuse cases stem from situations and conditions that are preventable in an engaged and supportive community, and whereas child abuse and neglect can be reduced by making sure every family has the support they need and deserve to raise their children in a healthy environment, and whereas it is recognized that no one person can do everything but that everyone can do something, and together we can create change for the better, and whereas effective prevention programs succeed because of the partnership among agencies, schools, religious organizations, law enforcement agencies, and the business community, and whereas displaying a blue ribbon in April will serve as a positive reminder that together we can prevent child abuse and keep children safe. Now therefore, I, James R. Marshall, Mayor of the town of Silver City, do hereby proclaim April 2011 as Child Abuse Prevention Month in Silver City, and I urge all citizens to engage in activities that strengthen families and communities to provide the optimal environment for children to learn, grow, and thrive so that all children have the benefit of happy, healthy, and safe childhoods.
Mr. Anderson?
Thank you. April is Child Abuse Prevention Month, and CYFD in this year has come out with a new number to call to report child abuse. It's actually on your cell phone, you can just hit pound SAFE, and you'll get to our hotline where there's another number you can call. It's 1-888-855-333-SAFE. I have these magnets, I don't know if you can pass them around?
I'd like to give some to the council.
Sure, sure. You bet.
And then if you put them out there, people will get picked up.
Okay. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. With that, I would like to ask the council's consensus to go ahead and rearrange the agenda and move up the unfinished business A and then possibly B.
Okay. I agree.
To the next order of business. Yolanda, did you want to report?
I'll go ahead and do that.
Okay.
She wouldn't do it. For resolution 2011 dash 09 adopted on March 8, 2011, the deadline for interested persons to submit their nominating petitions and affidavits to candidates qualifications was 30 days from the effective date of the resolution or April 7, 2011 at 5:00 PM. Three persons filed an affidavit of candidate's qualifications form and petition by April 7 deadline. However, only two of these persons filed petitions with the required amount of qualified signatures, at least 5% of the registered voters in District 3, or at least 92 signatures. The following two persons are qualified as candidates for appointment to the Town Council for Counselor in District 3. One, Jose A. Ray Jr., 610 South Cooper, Silver City, New Mexico. Number two, Herbert W. Marsden, 701 South Mountain View Road, Silver City, New Mexico.
Thank you. I'd just like to comment. One is, I'd like to thank both of these gentlemen for doing their petitions and showing interest in serving the citizens of Silver City. I did have an opportunity to meet with both of them, and it's, I find myself always torn when I go out and I advertise and beg people to apply for committees and be very active in the community, knowing that I can only choose one, and I let somebody down in doing that. But I think as far as the process goes, being as we are on an alternate process, I don't have a choice, I do have to make an appointment. And it doesn't come easy because I do know both the gentlemen. But I will make my appointment of Jose Ray, and I would ask for council consensus.
Yes.
And we have consensus. Mr. Ray, congratulations. With that being said, the next order of business would be the swearing in of the appointed council for District 3. Municipal Judge Sonia Ruiz will conduct the oath of office. Judge? Mr. Ray? You're perfectly fine.
Raise your hand. I state your name.
I state your name? No. I say.
Having been appointed to the office.
Having been appointed to the office.
Of council for District 3.
Of council for District 3.
In the town of Silver City.
In the town of Silver City.
Grant County.
Zank County.
State of New Mexico.
State of New Mexico.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution.
That I will support the Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
The Constitution.
The Constitution.
And laws of the state of New Mexico.
And the laws of the state of New Mexico.
And faithfully.
And faithfully.
And impartially.
And impartially.
Discharge the duties.
Discharge the duties.
Of said office.
Of said office.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
So, if you will please step over here, print for me here. You'll print your full legal name, and then I need your signature.
Okay. And you have mail waiting. Just so everybody knows, once you're a certified candidate for either an election or through this process, you are given a packet of all the stuff that we deal with on the council. So he's not walking up here totally blind, not knowing what's on the agenda or what the packet contained. And we did talk this morning, and he had reviewed the packet. So it's not like we just plucked somebody out and said, "Have a seat, and we're going to baffle you for the next hour or so." I'd just like to thank both of you and as well as everybody that worked to get petitions for all of the people. It was truly a good thing to see in the community that people went out and worked. And thank you, Counselor Ray.
You're welcome.
You'll have to get used to that term. So, next item on the agenda is public input. And I have Dr. Terry Timmy regarding Earth Day, and you have five minutes to speak. And if you're looking at me, I'll try to give you a one-minute warning.
Mr. Mayor, council, staff, I'm Terry Timmy, here tonight representing the Joint Office of Sustainability and the Department of Community Development, which is on behalf of the town cosponsoring the annual Earth Day festivities in Penny Park. I wanted to let you know a few of the things that will be going on in association with Earth Day. Actually, on Friday, the 22nd of April, which is the official date of Earth Day, we'll be having a screening of a brand-new film called Greenfire. It'll be at the Silco Theater at 7:00 PM, and it's free. Donations are appreciated but not required to attend this screening of a brand-new, high-definition film about the life of Aldo Leopold. And part of that, after the film, we'll have a few students from Aldo Leopold High School talking about what it means to be named, for the school to be named after Aldo Leopold, and what impact it has on them. In fact, one of the students just won a essay contest statewide based on this essay about Aldo Leopold. The following day, we'll be having festivities in Penny Park between 10 and 2 o'clock, and we'll have anywhere from 35 to 40 different booths of people selling plants. There'll be Native Plant Society and a lot of other vendors selling plants for your gardening needs. Also, there'll be a lot of informational booths with information about various environmental organizations, solar energy, the Office of Sustainability will have a booth there, a lot of other organizations to get more information about the community and how you can help benefit the earth and Silver City. We'll also be having food and entertainment. There'll be belly dancing, capoeira, Brazilian arts, martial arts type of dance. We're hoping that everybody will come out and enjoy the festivities between 10 and 2 at Penny Park on Saturday, April 23rd. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Chuck Fuller regarding e-waste.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, councilors, staff. I'm representing the town's Recycling Advisory Committee, of which I'm the chair, and in conjunction with the Earth Day event at Penny Park that Terry just talked about, we've organized to, as we did last year, collect unwanted electronics as well as a variety of other odds and ends, basically anything of metal value, cable, wire, stuff like that. We have expanded the process this year to reach out to governmental agencies, institutions, and large commercial operations here in town, and appear to have thus far been very successful. We may even be taking two semi-loads out. This process is going to allow the university and many others to recycle unwanted electronics free of charge, excluding old TVs or cathode ray tube CRT monitors, which we're asking a voluntary $5 donation. We're able to do this with a company called Unicore, which is a federal prison industry that has the highest levels of data destruction, media security, as well as providing severance of liability to anyone who wishes to have, receive either a certificate of recycling or a certificate of disposal, which turns out to be quite important to commercial institutional donors. Anyway, we're also taking anything that residents can bring. We'll have the solid waste authorities bringing out their recycling truck, and we're going to arrange for just a trash dumpster. So flyers will be going out, there's an add-in desert exposure, but please spread the word. And it turns out, if we can get an identified second semi's worth, we can possibly avoid the CRT fee as well, depending on the overall number. But it looks to be very successful, and if there's any questions, I'd be glad to answer.
Thanks. Thank you. Next item on the agenda is council comments. Counselor Madison, would you like to start?
Thank you, Mayor. Over the past several weeks, I've attended two things. One was the First Friday on April 1st in downtown Main Street. As always, First Fridays are lots of fun, and I encourage folks to go out and participate. And the second thing I attended was the municipal league's District 7 meeting in Macia, where I was elected to be the District 7 Director Alternate. Counselor Linda Ennis of Demme was elected the District 7 Director, and that's part of the New Mexico Municipal League's Board. So she replaces a long-serving director, Alex Brown, someone that served the municipal league very, very well. And I'm supposed to extend my thank you to you, as I already do, so thank you very much for all the work that you've done for the municipal league. And I just wanted to mention that this weekend, as well as the following weekend, are pretty packed with events in Silver City. There's something for everybody to do, and I encourage you to get out and go to one of the events that's around town. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Counselor Thompson.
Thank you. I'd like to welcome Counselor Ray to the table.
Oh, my apologies. I did not mean that.
Thank you. Also, I was going over the strategic plan. I think it's time that the council kind of looks at that a little bit more carefully. It seems that we listed a bunch of the threats, and we did an analysis with strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, and threats, but we have not yet prioritized those things, nor have we looked at what some of the root causes of some of these threats are and make sure that our budget fits those threats. I would really like to get back to doing the strategic plan. I think it's important that we do that. The reason that I was looking at it was, I'm on the Parks and Recs Board, and they're having a bit of a trouble finding relevancy. I think it's a really complex task. Parks and Rec includes just about everything. In fact, the public space that divides houses, streets, is that a recreational facility. That alone could occupy a whole board's efforts. And so I think that what they really need is a little guidance from the strategic plan so that we can look at the strategic plan from the perspective of Parks and Rec, and that'll help us prioritize what we feel is important to do. As far as the, I've been working still on the animal ordinance. The latest group that I've been talking to is the Hobby Breeders, and I've been really pleased with talking with these guys because they're probably gonna, they're gonna have to pay most of the cost for changing the patterns that we see right now as far as having too many animals. And they were very receptive, the ones I've talked to. And as long as we're all working on the common goal, they seem to be behind it. So we should be seeing that done here pretty soon. Hopefully, it's hard to get all of us together and write these things. That's it.
Thanks. Counselor Ray? Any comments? You don't have to.
I do. I would like to thank all you guys for giving me this opportunity, a new Mayor Marshall, and to my family, especially Banuni back there, and he knows who he is. Thank you.
Mr. Brown also? Thank you. Counselor Maronis?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Welcome, Counselor Ray. It would be a pleasure working with you. I spoke with some downtown merchants the other day, and they're planning this weekend, I believe on Sunday, to get together and start cleaning up the downtown area, in particular to get ready for the bike race. So if anybody would like to help pitch in and help them out, they can always contact. I'm sure Nick Seibel with the Main Street Project has some knowledge on when they're actually going to be gathering and getting this project together this Sunday. Also, it brings up a point, if anybody's interested in cleaning up any other parts of town getting ready for the bike race. This is a major, major event, and it's very big for the community economically and socially. So hopefully, we can all work together, and hopefully, the town can give any support that's practical. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Counselor Madison, round two.
I'd like to apologize to Counselor Ray for not immediately welcoming him to the council, but welcome, and I look forward to working with you.
Anybody else need round two? Hearing none. I would like to announce that the 2011 Mayor's Gala Spirit of the Red Cross Awards is Friday, May 20, 2011, starting at 5:30 PM, with dinner and a live auction to support the Red Cross at 6:15, and that's at the Farm and Ranch Heritage Museum in Las Cruces. And that is not this Mayor's Gala, but the Mayor of Las Cruces's Gala that I have supported the last couple of years. And I'd like to remind everybody that it is the Las Cruces Office that supports the Red Cross and Silver City. And I hope that we can show some support. I know they've got some great items to auction off down there, and the money will, has definitely come back home this year. It's kind of sad to say, but we've needed it back. So they put in a lot of time and effort to serve during the evacuation events that we've had. The next I received notice to this afternoon, actually, that the chamber was in attendance of the Governor's Conference on Tourism, and they received a Tourism Industry Association recognition award for the billboards that advertise Silver City along the interstates. We're in the company of Angel Fire, Albuquerque, and Gallup in receiving this recognition. The next item is the, this Saturday, and I believe it starts at 10, I'll find out before then because I'll be there, is the Ready, Set, Safe Workshops and Fair at the Conference Center. And we'll have all sorts of great displays and information and handouts and door prizes that help you make sure that your home and family are safe during these emergency events that we have. Then I want to comment, I got a contact from Aldo Leopold, Mr. Honor, is the principal who was there, and I met with him, I'm very impressed with the school, I'm impressed with, obviously with him, in leading the school and wanting to make sure that the school not only meets their mission but serves a need within the community. And we are working on some partnerships now that I think will be a benefit to the community. So I look forward to continuing to work with them. Also, I have been in contact with the coach of the WNMU football team, and I want to point out that this new coach has a strong feeling of including the team in the community, and they are already active in doing community service projects out in the community, and I will have them at a council meeting soon to talk about what they're doing. But it's just something that I've been pushing for a long time to make sure that our university is a strong part of the community, and it's very nice to see this new coach come in and have that theory, that they're not just student athletes, but they're students and community members. And then, just wanted to reference the strategic plan Counselor Thompson referenced. The plan, the plan for the strategic plan is to continue that. We had some very extensive work to do with the land use code and the entire codebook revisions, and then the legislative session, but we do plan to return to that project very soon, and right now is a horrible time for at least one of our members up here to take him out of his office, but we do plan on finishing that up. And that's all I have. The next item on the agenda is any changes to the agenda that we haven't already done? Hearing none. Approval of minutes of the regular meeting of the Town Council, March 23, 2011.
Mr. Mayor?
Counselor.
A move that we approve the minutes of the regular Town Council meeting of March 23, 2011.
Is there a second?
Mr. Mayor, I second that motion.
There's a motion and a second to approve? Although, is there any discussion? There's a motion and a second, no further discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is reports. Mr. Brown?
Mayor, basically, the only thing I have to report is, I just wanted to let you know over the next few weeks, I'm going to request that we start having some budget hearings. As you know, the preliminary budget has to be approved by the end of May. Right now, I have some preliminary Right now, I have some preliminary projections and preliminary budget numbers for the water sewer sanitation fund and lodger's tax. I've got some numbers for that, and I need some guidance as to how we're going to proceed for this year, so we can get going. But I think that's one of the bigger issues right now.
So you mean you didn't like my guidance? Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Brown? Chief, would you give us a brief talk about the fire last night and the fire this morning? Just to bring that, keep that on everybody's mind.
It'd be short and sweet. Approximately 8:00 last night, a fire started on the west side of Mountview, down in the canyon, in proximity to the Durango Street, which is south Spring Street, Durango, Silver Street area. It was probably about quarter of a mile south of the city shop, in that open area. According to the information we received, there was a four-wheeler in the area, or we can't associate that with the fire just at this point. It appears that approximately five to seven acres were burned down in that valley. Fire Department, the Silver City Fire Department, Tyrone, the Whiskey Creek, you know, south, those all responded to help knock that thing down. They did a great job on it. They stopped it from advancing down towards some houses. We had contacted four residents down there to get them prepared for evacuation, but luckily, they got to it. And also, wind change pushed it back into the itself, so it slowed it down pretty good. The fire this morning appears to be maybe about an acre of land off Thunder and Rosedale Road. Started close to some mailboxes. I'm not sure what caused it. Could have been somebody at the mailboxes flipped a cigarette and started the fire burning. It burned west towards a residence, got to their fence, and the fire department was able to stop it at that point.
Thank you. Any questions from the chief? Thanks.
Thank you.
Nick, I would like to ask if you'd come up and talk about Sunday a little bit, and just see if you can give us some time and awareness. I actually spent about two hours with Mr. Seibel last night. So I'm not going to put you on the spot for a full report, but...
That's good, because although I'm always prepared to talk. Mr. Mayor, Council, congratulations first to District 3 Counselor Ray. It's good to see you up there, and I look forward to working with you. Some of the downtown merchants, sort of led by Diane Barrett from Diane's Restaurant, and Rocky Mondello from Morningstar, are working to put together a downtown cleanup. And Main Street's working to support them in that, and that's going to be happening this coming Sunday, I believe that's the 17th of April. They're going to be meeting, actually, in the parking lot of Morningstar, and sort of spreading out throughout downtown to do cleanups. The idea is individual merchants are volunteering to clean up in front of their store and the stores of their neighbors on either side. And anybody else in the community that wants to come down and lend a hand, there'll be sidewalk cleaning and just general sprucing up going on to get ready for the Tour de Hila and all the other events that come after it this summer. As you know, there's a lot of important areas of Grant County's economy, but tourism is among the most important these days. And the way our community looks obviously impacts the way people think of us as they come to Silver. So something to think about, as I think the mayor said, not just downtown, but throughout the community. But downtown is everybody's living room, and so if you want to come down and help us keep it clean, we would welcome the help.
Thank you. Counselor Bedison.
What time?
I'm going to start at 1:00 on Sunday, and I expect it'll run for at least a couple of hours. So if you can't be there right at 1:00, just come down and pitch in. And if you have brooms, if you have work gloves, those might be good things to bring if you have them handy. Sure?
Thank you. Judge, as a department head, do you have anything you'd like to report? Thank you. Next item on the agenda is organizational meeting, and the first item is the election of President Pro Tempore. And with that, I'll entertain nominations.
Mr. Mayor.
Counselor.
I'd like to nominate Counselor Bedison to keep her post, since she's done so well.
I'd like to second that.
There's a nomination and a second. Any other nominations? Entertain a motion to close nominations and elect Counselor Bedison President Pro Tempore by acclamation. Anybody to say as stated?
As stated.
Is there a second to that motion? There's a motion and a second to close nominations and elect Counselor Bedison as the President Pro Tempore by acclamation. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Congratulations.
I just increased my salary.
We'll double it.
Yep.
The next item on the agenda is appointments of councilors to committee and board positions. We're just going to go down the list. We have the Cemetery Board is an advisory board, and Counselor Maronis has been the representative on that, and I would like that to remain the same. The Library Board is an advisory board. Counselor Bedison has been the representative on that, and I would like that to stay the same. The Dispatch Board, Counselor Bedison has been the representative on that and has requested, and I concur that she should stay in that position. The Southwest Regional Transit District has been, was blank? Counselor Maronis was the alternate. I'd like to move Counselor Maronis to the primary board member, with myself being the alternate. The Museum is an advisory board, and I'd like to appoint Counselor Ray. The Parks and Recreation is an advisory board, and Counselor Thompson has been the representative, and I would like him to continue. The Southwest Solid Waste Authority is a board, and, oh man, I'm here again. Myself, the mayor, with an alternate being Counselor Thompson, with staff appointments being Manager Brown, with an alternate of Peter Pena. And that remains unchanged, and I'd like to maintain that.
Sure.
I'm positive. The next is the Mayor's Climate Committee is an assistant position for Mr. Brown. And I believe that's actually in the resolution that formed it, that I can't change that. The Grant County Water Commission is a commission, and that is Manager Brown and the mayor. The Grant County Economic Development Coalition for Progress is a commission, and that's Manager Brown with the mayor as the alternate. The Silver City Main Street Project, the Board Ex officio is Mr. Manager Brown and the mayor. And the Southwest, okay, we're going to skip that one. The Health Council, Mr. Brown has sat on that for many years, and I would like to continue support for you to remain on that. And the next one is the Chief Elected Officials, Region 4 Southwest Area, and I would like to leave that vacant and not appoint anyone to it. Is there...
Mayor. The council of governments, we need an alternate for me when I'm not there.
Is that what you mean by Health Council?
No.
No? Okay.
Who was it wanted that one?
Yeah.
Was it you? Counselor Bedison would go to the cobb.
Okay.
As an alternate, right?
Yeah.
That wasn't on my list. Just for some clarity, the commission represents the Town Council and has authority. A board represents the Town Council and has authority to spend money and set policy. An advisory advises the Town Council and Town Manager on specific issues. Ex officio indicates the council is represented and supports group, but does not have a vote. And is there any objection to these appointments? Hearing none. They're all duly appointed. And that takes us down to item number 12, the Approval of Consent Agenda. And this is a list of five resolutions that we do annually, that we worked out some issues last year with one of them, and they remain as approved last year. So they were put on a consent agenda. If anybody would like any of them pulled off, or would like to debate any of them, they'll be pulled out of the consent agenda and dealt with alone. Is there a motion to approve all items in the consent agenda?
Mr. Mayor.
Counselor.
I move that we approve all items in the consent agenda. Do I need to list them, or...
Please.
Resolution number 2011-12, adopting a fair housing policy. Resolution number 2011-13, citizen participation plan, CDBG program. Resolution number 2011-14, residential anti-displacement and relocation plan certification. Resolution number 2011-15, CDBG procurement policy. And resolution number 2011-16, Section 3 Plan.
Is there a second?
Mr. Mayor, I second that motion as stated.
There's a motion and a second to approve all items on the consent agenda. Is there any discussion? Motion and a second, no discussion. Roll call.
Counselor Bedison.
Aye.
Counselor Thompson?
Aye.
Counselor Ray?
Aye.
Counselor Maronis?
Aye.
Motion carries. The next item on the agenda is approval/disapproval of special dispensers permit application by Members Regional Arts Council for the 2011-16 Annual Silver City Blues Festival and Beer Garden, May 27th through the 29th, 2010. License holder, the Red Barn Silver City, New Mexico, Ms. McKelman.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Welcome, Counselor Ray. Nice to see you up there. I'm here this evening to seek your approval for the special dispensers permit for the Silver City Blues Festival Beer Garden. I think you have all the paperwork before you. It's the same license holders as last year, the Red Barn. All their paperwork seem to be in order. If any of the dates of the licensed servers are not correct, they will be correct by the time of the event. And as you can see, it's scheduled to operate from 1:30 until 9:30 on Saturday, and from 8 until sun, excuse me, from noon until 8:00 PM on Sunday. Do you have any questions for me, or anything else you need to know?
Any questions? Counselor Bedison.
It's not for Ms. McKelman, it's actually for the manager. Mr. Brown, I noticed when I reviewed the permit to use Town Park that it hasn't been updated with the new noise ordinance information. It has DBA, it has amplified noise exceeding blank DB for decibels, but it doesn't. Looks like the last time it was revised was 2/2010.
I can grant a waiver.
Right, but we can, in the future, make sure that...
Yes, I think this was the first, the first application since we've updated it, so we all make sure that Ann updates it on the application.
Okay. It wasn't meant to state not to do, but that we make sure we do in the future.
Okay.
Just for the record, that's not a disqualifying...
Right.
...issue for this request for the permit.
No, it wasn't meant to be.
Anything else? Any questions? Questions? Entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I move for approval of a special dispensers permit application by Members Region Arts Council for the 2011-16 Annual Silver City Blues Festival and Beer Garden, May 27th through the 29th, 2011. License holder, the Red Barn Silver City, New Mexico.
Mr. Mayor, I second the motion as stated.
There's a motion and a second to approve. Is there any discussion? There's a motion and a second to approve. No further discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. Congratulations. And the next item on the agenda under new business is appointment of one member to the Cemetery Board. And as is custom, I generally try to speak to the chair of the board on any appointments. The chair has been out of town till very recently, after the agenda was done, and I would like to postpone action on that item. Make a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we postpone action on appointment of one member to the Cemetery Board.
Is there a second?
Mr. Mayor, I second that.
There's a motion and a second, postpone action on appointment of one member to the Cemetery Board. Is there any discussion? There's a motion and a second, no further discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries.
Mr. Mayor.
Counselor.
I move for adjournment.
A second? There's a motion and a second to adjourn. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries, and we are adjourned.